Special meeting to order at 3:00 PM on Tuesday, September 22nd. This is our, this is another of our reopening update work sessions in a series and so thank you for following along and thank you to staff. So for the record, I will call here, starting Director Hampson.
Here.
Thank you, Director.
Present.
Thank you, Director. Here and Director DeWolf, you're a little choppy for me. Thank you. Oh, thank you. I'll try to fix that. Director Mack.
Here.
Thank you. Director Rankin.
Here.
And Director Vera Smith.
Present.
Thank you. And first, this is Director DeWolf. The superintendent is also present as well as staff who will be presenting to the agenda today. This meeting is being held remotely. Phone and through SPS, to facilitate this remote meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. There is not a public comment opportunity today. Staff will be working to administer the meeting and may be muting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear from directors and staff. Today's reopening update is focused on special education and family engagement. I have asked Director Rankin and Director Hampson to support facilitation today, so I'll hand it over to Director Rankin to chair the first portion on special education. And then Director Hampson will lead on the second portion in family engagement. And with that, Director Rankin, I'll turn it over to you and thank you all for being here.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you. For this first portion, Chief of Student Support Services, Dr. Conzi Pedrosa, will be presenting today along with the Executive Director of Special Education, Trish Campbell. We also have the Director of Special Education, Tara Mitchell, and Director of Special Education, Devon Gurley. I, we have, we got a lot of emails and we have a lot of questions from community. And so I just want to acknowledge that before we start, that knowing we are tight on time and we cannot cover everything, that we decided that it was best as much as possible to focus today on current, current for fall, what's, what's happening, what families should expect. And Dr. Pedrosa and I will keep working on collecting data and getting that out in a publicly available format, knowing that we won't be able to cover all of it today. So I just wanted to set that out there. So with that, I will hand it over to Dr. Pedrosa to begin the special education presentation and then we'll have a brief opportunity for directors' questions and comments before we move on to family engagement. Dr. Pedrosa, take it away.
Thank you. And I want to thank all of you for your time. And I just want to start by saying that we acknowledge that remote learning has significantly altered the teaching and learning process and the student, teacher, parent relationship. And we also know that it has created a major disruption in the delivery of all education, including special education supports and services. And the pandemic has highlighted the disparities for families, including those with disabilities and students for this from educational justice. And while we acknowledge that all SPS students are not receiving the same level of educational experiences before COVID closures, our planning from spring required us to take a different approach for students with IEPs. Our number one goal is for our students with IEPs to make progress and support their social emotional needs that are exacerbated by this pandemic while balancing the needs of the individual student and the safety requirements based on science. So I'm going to move to the next slide. I'm going to try to go through these and focus on the ones that are, the ones that I know that there will be questions around. And this is the agenda. I just want to share this agenda with all of you really quickly. And it's, we'll be going through, talking about fall planning, professional development, just briefly, in-person services, recovery services, family engagement, and next steps. I want to share, I'm going to reintroduce a little bit, but there was a reorg that happened in the spring. This was based on some digging into the work that was happening and also the, the need to support students as we are now doing learning support teams for all schools. So we reshifted the entire department to be organized around the learning support teams at schools and to be strategically focused on elementary and secondary. We did, and we also reshifted all the special education supervisors as well as the program specialists in service to that based on their expertise and knowledge to support schools. And we feel like this is an approach that we wanted to take to make sure that schools have that learning support team that actually has that expertise in the area that they're serving students. And I have here Trish Campbell, Executive Director, Tara Mitchell, Director, and Devon Gurley, Director overseeing secondary. So and I shared this already at the last work session we had regarding community partnerships and I just wanted to reiterate that this is the plan still moving forward, that the individual education programs will be the driver for remote and in-person learning. And I want to share that the reason why we're emphasizing this is because last spring, when OSPI had made some shifts in terms of delivery, the focus instead was on continuous learning plans, which basically took some of the elements of the IEP, but we had to focus in a different way. And that is no longer the case. And so we're going back to, you know, the IEPs supporting the student for all fall services, remote or in-person moving forward.
Dr. Pedrosa, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think that we're still on the special education. There's the plan one. Thank you. The slide hadn't progressed. Thank you.
Oh, sorry. It's, it's changed on mine, but maybe it's a little delayed for you. So IEP guidance training was delivered to school leaders and staff. IEPs will be reviewed within 30 school days of the start of school. And if students are not making meaningful growth on their IEP goals, IEP teams can convene to determine if additional supports or trainings are needed. In addition, IEP team meetings will be conducted with families, students of appropriate, and school staff to ensure an amended IEP and learning plans are in place to support students. That is a very important component. Families and students are critical members of the IEP team. And if in-person services are determined by the IEP team after review of data, the IEP team will coordinate with the special ed department and utilize a decision-making protocol in alignments with OSP, OSP guidance. And I'm going to pass this on. I'm going to move the slide, making sure, is that moving with, for everybody? Do you have a new slide? Just making sure.
Yes, we do.
Great. Okay. Great. Trish, I'm going to pass this over to Executive Director Trish Campbell.
Hi there. This is Trish Campbell. So what does this mean? This means that all services in the, that are documented in the existing IEP are implemented at the start of the school year. That means that all of our IEPs will be up and running, including the goals and the minutes and all of that. If the IEP that is currently written can be implemented, including related services, and it meets the students' needs, an IEP meeting does not need to take place. Staff has been asked to contact, connect with every family and to review services for fall. And then, and IEP teams will review to ensure that IEPs are amended and current. In the spring, we had some IEPs that some families were wanting to wait until we were in person or, or, and so many of our IEPs were what we, what we call out of compliance. So we are making sure that they are current and in compliance. We have, OSPI has given us 30 days from the start of the school year to make sure that that takes place. For SPS, the first day of school is September 4th for, for grades one through 12, and it was eight, the eighth for kindergarten. So if the IEP though, is currently, that is currently in place, does not align with the students' needs during remote learning, an IEP meeting will need to occur. And, and it, and that IEP team will include the family members who are vital members of the team and support the decision-making as teams determine how services need to be relayed in the IEP. So we'll go to the next slide. Thank you. Okay. And I'm going to pass on to Director Devon Gurley, who worked this summer and is in, still continuing to work on some professional development for our educators.
Good afternoon. So this summer, we provided multiple professional development opportunities for staff, including special education induction, SLI, and Remote Learning Institute. We took feedback from staff and we worked with educators over the summer to plan and lead the professional development, which we provided especially, specifically for the Remote Learning Institute. We had a session for all staff that focused on inclusive practices, successful inclusive practices. And this is one of the, the slides that we, we shared that was critical that all staff got to see. So we had over 3,000 people engaging in this professional development, which the, the graphic on this slide comes from a Seattle Times article about outcomes for students with IEPs. So that kind of really helped ground us in, in the why inclusion is important, as well as discussions about successful inclusive practices in, in school-wide classrooms and school-wide. And so in the Remote Learning Institute, we had the, in addition to the training for all staff, we also had specific trainings for special education staff that included scheduling practices, IA roles and responsibilities, progress monitoring and goals, and family communication and engagement strategies. And all of these were components that we listened and learned from educators and families that worked and were successful for the summer learning opportunities that students with IEPs engaged in. Additionally, we talked about general education supports and we created these series of trainings that were both job-alike specific and for all staff with, for special education. And then moving forward, we are currently planning continued support and training for both general education and special education staff as well as families to help students authentically engage and make meaningful progress in their education.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devon. I think I am next on the next slide here. Yeah, I was going to, I'm going to take you through a scenario to kind of give you an idea of what this will look like. Director Mitchell's going to talk about in-person services next. So to give you an idea of what this will look like and the process that will take place, for example, a case manager or special education reviews the IEP and is able to implement the IEP as written, that case manager then would contact the family, discuss how services will be implemented in the remote setting, answer questions, and plan for services. If the IEP cannot be implemented as written, or the IEP requires to be different or adjusted due to remote learning, the team, including the parent, who's a critical member of the team, will meet to discuss. And at the meeting, they'll consider what worked, what did not work in the spring, what is currently working or not working. The team will review the current IEP and they will look to determine what the student needs to make progress on their IEP goals. They'll consider supports that may be needed for the family, for the student. Do they need tech support? Do they need an adjusted schedule? Do we need to look at different goals? Are there other accommodations that we need to consider because we are now in remote learning? And if the student hasn't made progress on, on those IEP goals, the team may consider in-person services. If this is the case, the team will review the student data, consider additional adjustments that may need to be made. And at this time, a member of the health team will be included in the meeting and support the process of determining what health and safety protocols are required. And this will include determining what training will need to take place for the, for the family, student, and staff. They'll discuss which services will be supported in person and which may continue to be served remotely. And there's a lot of coordination here with nutrition services, transportation. The work is all individual, everything from entry and exit, in and out of the building, attestation processes, the PPE that needs to be utilized in the training. And will be in place before the student enters the building for service. So Director Mitchell's going to talk a little bit about the in-person service work that's been done.
Thank you. This is Tara Mitchell speaking. So as Director Campbell mentioned, we coordinated all of the different departments to create a, a plan of action for, for our in-person services. We had an internal work group coordinating the school operations, including PPE as outlined by Public Health and Coordinated Health Team, including attestation for staffing and student assurances. We coordinated safety tradings through Coordinated Health and Human Resources Teams, taking into account accommodations for ADA and other considerations with Human Resources Teams, coordinated with transportation and nutrition with the operations team, and made sure to include the COVID site coordinators oversight in with the school leaders team. Next slide, please. In planning for our in-person services, Health Services Department gathers the following information, determines if a student has health concerns or complex needs that need to be factored in, determines the student's health, behavioral, or sensory needs, also takes into account how will services be delivered, the number of individuals in this space, type of materials that need to be used. And then the determining, in determining the mitigating measures for staff and students, it includes the proper PPE for the staff and for the students, determines and provides the necessary trainings for staffs, student, and families, clearly communicates about distance requirements, and coordinates the cleaning and disinfecting procedures, as well as any other considerations that need to be put into place. And now I'll turn it back to Dr. Pedrosa.
Thank you. And then just to go over, there is a lot of questions about recovery or compensatory education. And Recovery Services describe the need to recover any educational gaps in learning or loss of skill caused by unexpected school facility closures. And, and for this case, we are in that place for many of our students and families, looking at considering what does Recovery Services look like? Compensatory education services may be ordered as part of a complaint investigation or due process hearing when a student was denied FAP, Free Appropriate Public Education. And districts can offer COMPED if aware of a student being denied FAP. So and, and if people are wondering if they have a COMPED case that they want to actually pursue, they can notify the student's case manager or teacher moving forward. And I'm going to go to the next page. So this is our page describing family engagement. We started in spring to meet with families. And so I've listed the dates of all the engagements that we've done, either with SP, the Special Education PTSA Board or the general meetings. We also, we went often, especially around the springtime because one of the things that we always talk about in terms of our work, we talk about rebuilding systems and we cannot rebuild systems if we don't know how they're impacting students and families. And so that's one of the goals that we had to go into spaces. And our special education directors are actually continuing that work to go into those spaces and do listening sessions. When we look at the survey results that have come back, the various survey results that have come back through various means, whether it was Seattle Public Schools or through other ways, we've noticed that families of color tend to be less responsive to our families of surveys. And we can talk about the why and all the reasons why. But we know that many of our families require alternative approaches to engaging with them. And so we decided to do listening sessions right before school started to understand the impacts on families. So I wanted to share the timelines of all of these engagement sessions. We always had special education staff at any one of these events, but I wanted to share that that was the work. And we actually did a lot of learning and listening about the impacts on families, what was successful, what was challenging, what do they want to see continued working? And actually, I don't, we'll share what we've learned from these sessions moving forward. And the last thing I wanted to share is many departments also participated with us in these family sessions and especially the bilingual special education families of color listening sessions. We had all of, we had representation from almost many of the departments also in those sessions to listen. And we are currently working with the community engagement team to process the feedback and the notes and working currently with the facilitators to design next steps. But this is what we learned basically from a lot of families, that this is not everything. This is just a snippet of some of the things that families shared with us through various ways. And this is what we shared actually with all of Seattle Public School teachers. When we had the opportunity to be in front of every Seattle Public School teacher, we wanted teachers to know what families are sharing with us about special education. And so one was, families understand that this situation is stressful for everyone. Families need teachers to communicate consistently and regularly. Families should not have to reach out. School staff should connect with them early and often, I'm going to add. Families need strategies and how to best support their children with remote instruction. Families want regular connections with all school staff, not just special education staff. So this includes the general education teacher, all their teachers. They want their teachers to be, meeting with them and connecting with them. Teachers should share data and progress with them regularly. Families need staff to proactively schedule small groups and individual sessions rather than expecting students with IEPs and 504s to sign up for office hours on their own. And families understand and know how difficult it is to engage, but schools still need to try. Excuse, I skipped one. And then I just wanted to share, as we continued some of our listening sessions, specifically for our families of color, I just wanted to add some additional learning that our department has had. Families of color specifically, feedback was for more parent coaching, parent training and supports. That came out in many of the sessions that they asked for specific assistance in some, especially around technology. A lot of the assistive technology pieces, that information. Barriers for bilingual families, it needs to be removed in every, at every level, at the school level, department level, and we need to continue working on that. Some concerns need to be shared with other departments and we need to continue to work together to cross-departmentally support families. School staff need skills and support to communicate directly with our Black Indigenous POC bilingual and special education families. Families, and I think in all sessions, all of our meetings, when we listened with Special Education PTSA and, and our families of color, they, they were very vulnerable. They really shared stories. They shared challenges, hopes, some successes that were, that were useful to them. But families were very vulnerable in sharing with us and told us a lot of information. And we are holding that very close to us to make sure that we're doing right by that. Families of color already have racial trauma, racialized trauma. We understand that with the rhetoric happening right now with the racial trauma and especially with the violence on our Black and our Black and Brown community members. And the pandemic has added to the racial trauma in their lives. And they actually would really like schools to understand that. Families are in different places and staff need to start there with check-ins. And families want to continue to meet and center their voice. And so families kept saying, no, we want to keep doing this. We want to keep having these sessions. And some one family member said, this has actually been a little healing for me. So we're, and not every, I'm just speaking for one person. That's what one person shared. But I just want to make sure that, that for some families, it was helpful to be in that affinity space with people who mostly look like them to help really share some of their concerns. Next slide. And our continued next steps, I think this is really important for our department, finalize and communicate internal work group procedures, especially to implement for the safety and PPE and operations. This is important. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm going to go back and reshare my slide. I don't know what I did. But I'm going to get it back up. Do you see it?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Sorry about that. I got a little techie with that, that mistake. But anyway, so our continued next steps, finalize and communicate internal work group procedures to ensure implementation of safety and PPE, continue professional development, and especially coaching to ensuring that staff and supports are in place for IEP team processes and student learning, develop family engagement supports and coaching systemically with special attention to bilingual families. That's actually something work I'm really excited that we're going to start building on. Progress monitor compliance for IEP reviews, updates, and amendments. Support IEP teams through school learning teams for continue rep around MTSS guidance. Continue coordination with central office departments to ensure planning for students with disabilities. And then we do monthly updates at the CNI Policy Committee and we will continue to do that and we will update. In fact, some of the updates also are in the Friday memos as well. And then just in closing, I just want to add, I know I'm short on time, but I do want to thank our families, special education staff and department for their time and effort over the summer. Every time we listen, it drives us to do more to improve our systems and structures. I also want to thank our union partners who went into the summer planning and bargaining while also balancing work and children. We came, we all came out with an MOU agreement for, with Special Education Services, including in-person services for our students. It was a challenging summer for everyone. And as we collaborated and planned for remote and in-person services, which is based on IDA, as IDA intended, to be decisions based on individual student need, growth, and progress. I thank you so much for your time and we are now going to move to questions.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pedrosa and team. I'm going to go through alphabetically, but just want to reiterate again that we are fully aware that we cannot possibly get to everything in the amount of time that we have. And so just to remind directors that I do have a list of questions that Dr. Pedrosa and I will go over and, and figure out how to get a report on especially the particular data that people asked for to make sure that that will get shared out so that, because we just don't have time to do it today. So just, I will just go alphabetically if there are any questions that haven't been given in some way already. Director DeWolf.
Thank you. I'll be quick to, and then just to want to share my gratitude to President of the Special Ed PTSA, Janice White. She connected with Director Rankin and I this week with some questions. So I'll make sure that those are passed on and hopefully we can get those answered in the Friday memo. One that I wanted to highlight was, can you just clarify again how we're going to be identifying? How, how are students who need evaluations going to be identified during remote learning? How are we going to identify students with disabilities in this remote learning?
Hi. Yeah, yeah, I'm going to have Trish answer that. Yep.
So the, the process will still be the same. Sorry, can you hear me? Am I being heard? I'll keep talking. Okay, thank you. So sorry. Yeah. So the process will be the same. In the spring, we did not have a mechanism to do in-person evaluations. So we weren't able to conduct the full evaluation. At this point though, nearly all of the evaluation, things that need to take place to support a student through the evaluation process can take place. We, we've already started our in-person evaluation, components of the in-person evaluations have taken place. I don't, I'm not sure I said that clearly. We are in the process. We are moving through with evaluations as if we were in school. They will look a little bit different, but we have the processes and the procedures in place to make sure that student evaluations can be conducted. We do have a little bit of a backlog from the evaluations that did, were not conducted in the spring. So we're, there was, they're getting prioritized and we're moving through them.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, thanks. Director Hampson.
Yeah, the question that I had is about in the identification of whether or not the students' needs can be met, cannot be met on, sorry, what I'm trying to say is I have a concern about a student's needs that are determined can be met online. And in other words, don't need in-person requirements, but that it puts, it, it basically results in additional online time for that student, which may not be effectively meeting the needs of that student. I don't know if that's clear, but do you understand the nature of my question? I'm worried about overloading a student who's already, you know, possibly struggling with remote learning because of conditions that are captured in the IEP, then having to do additional online time.
I, I think I'm going to, this is Trish again. I'm going to try to answer your question and I'm, I think I understand what you're saying. I'm going to just answer it and then let's see if I captured what you're saying. So that would be part of that IEP meeting that a team would have to discuss because the conditions have changed. We are now in because the conditions have changed. We are now in remote learning. So we don't want students to be, where we're doing that synchronous and asynchronous learning time. So we're going to want to utilize synchronous and asynchronous time to support that student in the learning that they need to play, that needs to take place balancing that gen ed period, so they're getting that core content, and then supporting with their special education time. So the IEP team would meet, and if a student is being, is able to make progress on their IEP goals, but is being burdened by excess time, or then a team would need to sit down and discuss and make adjustments on that IEP so that we can support that student in the best way possible for that individual kid. Did I get your question?
Yeah, I think you understood what I was saying. It's just, yeah, a matter of not, just because something can be delivered online doesn't mean that it should in the overall scope of the IEP, and that that is in fact part of the discussion.
Right, it should absolutely be part of the discussion. If a student's making progress on their IEP goals, we want to balance making sure they're getting that core content, they're making progress on goals, and at the same time, we're not burdening that student with work that is unnecessary for them to make progress on their goals and maintain their academic success at school.
Okay, thank you so much.
Hello?
Thank you. Director Harris?
Thank you. I just have a couple of quick questions if I might. I know that Chief Pedrosa and I spoke about assisting the Seattle Special Ed PTSA with race inequity and cultural bias training, and I wonder where we are there. I also wonder whether we couldn't invite the Special Ed PTSA to incorporate their shout-out into the Friday memo. Because not everybody, I mean, we get our information different ways, and I think that would be of assistance. Thank you.
So just to answer the first question, I am in talks with the Drea Department to sort of think through supports. I, like I mentioned before, Director Harris, the resources are very limited, and we have to think, and I understand the need for parent education on those topics. And so just kind of think through what is the best way to do that and how to do that. Because the resources we have are specifically dedicated to staff learning. We have 4,000 educators to support, but it's not off the table. We've, I know they're talking too, and I know they also have been meeting with other people as well, but I'd like them to speak for themselves. I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about in terms of the second question, a shout-out. So can, maybe you and I can talk offline more about what you mean, if that's okay.
Well, I'd just like for us to invite the Special Ed PTSA to send reports in for the Friday memo. And for that matter, the Seattle PTSA as well. So we can all share information in one place. I mean, we need more communication screens. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Director Hersi?
Hey, can y'all hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. So when I was looking at, I only have three questions, by the way. So first, taking a look at the timeline, it says 30 days, but really, in all actuality, that to me looks like 30 school days, which I think is the right timeline. So realistically, we should be communicating out to families that if they have a child with an IEP, that they should be contacted by mid-October. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yep. If the IEP is not current and not able to be implemented as is written, then we need to have that IEP meeting and then have that IEP current. By, it's around mid-October is when that would need to take place.
Okay, so then a follow-up question to that is, are we not contacting all families with IEPs?
Yes, we've asked all of our educators to connect with all of, all families to discuss how services will be implemented during remote learning. And I, however, an IEP meeting may not take place, may not need to take place.
Okay, so that makes sense to me. So when we say contact, what does that entail, right? Because what I know from being in the classroom is that contact varies from educator to educator. Is there like, not necessarily a checklist, but a protocol that we need to follow in terms of what that contact looks like? And just trying to figure out because, and which kind of leads into my next question is, if we can't get ahold of our parents, especially by that date, what does that look like in terms of moving forward with the meeting? Because again, I just know that for a lot of kids in our building in the past, when we were in in-person learning, if we couldn't get ahold of a parent, the meeting still occurred, and we still tried to contact the parent, which isn't necessarily best practice in my view. And so I'm just trying to see, given that our engagement is what it is at this point, it would be really nice to know, okay, what percentage of families with IEPs have we been able to get in contact with? And then a little bit more clarity on what is the communication protocol that we're expecting our educators and building staff to follow?
Right. I appreciate that question a lot, and I'm in alignment with you on wanting to really double down on our efforts to make sure that families have a voice at the table and are able to participate in that IEP process. So typically in IEP land, or in the world of special education, educators can make like three attempts to connect with the family and then proceed. However, we value family participation and really want to make every effort possible to bring the family into that process. And we'll continue to move forward. We err in the side of allowing the IEP to be late versus conducting it and then later trying to get the family to participate. Does that make sense?
No, that makes perfect sense. Thank you. That's what I would hope.
Yeah, we really, family participation is first, our first and foremost goal. And at the same time, that does rub me, it's hard for me to say that a little because compliance is also super important. We need both. We need really both to happen. So we need good communication between our case managers, who are our special education teachers, and our families so that we can really have a good flow of information back and forth, have a compliant IEP that works for the student, and the educator is able to implement.
That's awesome. So my last follow-up request would be sometime, maybe as a special attention item at CNI, it would be great to get a progress in how many of our students with IEPs and their families have been contacted and are being served, like a percentage-wise. It could also be in the Friday memo, but I'd really like to figure out a way to track this to make sure that we're actually reaching our families with some efficacy. Thank you.
Right, can I add one little bit piece though?
Yes, please.
Just if an IEP is not current, that does not mean that the IEP is not being served. We continue to serve the IEP whether it's current or not current. So we don't halt services because it's not in compliance. We continue that IEP. So I think that's something that are, that we, that's really important to know.
Yeah, and that would be great. And in addition, just thinking about that as well, when we get that update on how many we've served in all, I would also see, you'd like to see it broken out by specifically Black males and our other students brothers from educational justice to see what are we doing to reach those children specifically? So that would be really appreciated. Thank you so much.
Appreciate the question. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hersi. We just have a couple minutes left in our time for this topic. Let us now go to Director Mack.
Yeah, I will try to be brief, but I do have two. One thing I want to highlight, and then one thing I want to ask a question about. One is that I had spoken with Director Rankin about this data request, and I think that it's been put forward to staff. But I think it would be really helpful for us to see the IEP minutes assigned per building and the staffing that's presently allocated for that, just as a baseline of what IEP minutes are, you know, services are being requested in the current state, whether or not they're updated or current, or whatever, that data of number of minutes that are in IEPs and whether or not we're staffed appropriately and on a building-by-building basis. Just in the current state, I know there's a lot of messiness with those numbers, but I look forward to seeing that data. And with regards to the question of the reviews and determining if services can be provided, I have a little bit of concern about if they can be provided or whether or not the question is, what's the most appropriate support these students will need in this remote setting? Because I do think that, kind of going back to Director Hampson's question, that the remote learning environment may not be the way that they can actually access appropriately. And maybe the supports provided via IAs are not the exact, you know, hand-holding, direct, one-to-one in that same way, but it's, you know, changing the method to phone calls, additional, you know, strategies for pacing and other, you know, other strategies that are, you know, different than maybe what they would have been doing in the classroom. But that, that in the review of the IEPs, I think my question really is, are staff directed to determine what is the most appropriate shifts in services to serve the student's goals? And not whether or not what's in their IEP can be provided at this point? I think that's a slightly different question, and I'm not, I'm a little concerned and worried that maybe we're not asking the right question in the review. And I want to ask whether or not there might be some focus on ensuring that we're asking the question of what's the right services to ensure that students can access education in this environment? And not whether or not their current IP is just able to be done remotely?
Right. Director Mack, I think what you're asking, this is Trish again. I think that you're asking the question about when the teams are sitting down and discussing the services. And if services can be implemented, then that's great, golden. But if services aren't able to be implemented, or they need to be adjusted, then you're asking, is the team thinking about other ways and other avenues of supporting that student to engage in learning? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I'm thinking about the shifting of what services are provided. And in particular, and just as an example, students with executive functioning issues, the scheduling and the calendaring and all of this is adding stress. So additional supports in that regard are needed for those students now. And so I'm, that's where I'm wondering if, you know, if the focus is just on whether or not their current thing can be implemented, that's not the right question. It's like, what services do they need now in this remote setting to ensure they can access? Which means there's probably a list of different services, maybe not more time, but maybe different accommodations and services. And I, I'm asking, to what level are we asking staff to be proactive on those fronts?
Right, yeah, I appreciate that. So one of the things that we did learn through summer, through our ESY Extended School Year teachers, they were finding a lot of different avenues, different ways to support families. One thing they found was really good communication with the families was critical to success and the student making progress. And they developed different types of visuals and things that they could support families with through the remote learning process. And we utilized those, and that's just a few. I can't, I could probably list a few more, but they're not coming to me right this second, that were utilized then in trainings with the teachers. So that they could support families and the student as they're looking to make progress on their IEP goals. So I get your question, and there's some other things that are happening with our educators as they're learning more and more about how to support students in the setting that we're using to support kiddos, students.
We have one more, Director, and then unfortunately, we need to, we need to finish. So Director Vera Smith?
Thank you. Yeah, I realize we're already behind time, I think. So I was, I'm wondering, are we tracking? I know we're only in the third week of school, but are we tracking attendance for our special education students? And how is that looking?
That's in the data report that we're going to be asking for, that we'll get later.
I understand. Yeah, a lot of my questions I submitted ahead of time were for data, so I understand that that is forthcoming. And I, but I want to just clarify too, I heard you say that in the determination for in-person services, that part of that we'll be looking, you are looking at the data from the spring on the students, correct?
We're looking to talk with the, for the IEP team to discuss what was working in the spring and what maybe wasn't working in the spring, so that we can build on strengths and that we can adjust, if there's things that we need to adjust, or like Director Mack was talking about, finding different avenues, different ways that we need to support the student and family as they're accessing remote learning so they can make progress.
I understand. And I think what's really hard for a lot of families to understand right now, and for myself too, is how it can be such a process to determine something that seems so obvious to a lot of parents who have struggled already through the spring and summer with their children and know that they do not respond online, that they cannot do it. And it's just, it's, you know, it's sometimes frustrating for them to not have gone this long, potentially three or four more weeks without getting supports, adequate supports for their student. If in-person services, I mean, I don't, and that's just, I'm sharing that frustration with you. I'm sure you've heard it. I know you've heard it. And I'm wondering, is there a requirement to have this further assessment done? Is this something we are choosing to do? Is this state mandated that we do follow more assessment steps first? Or could we, you know, just have those strong check-ins with families determine that, you know, yes, we know your student is not able to do online and get those children in sooner?
Right. So I'm going to try to answer, but I know we're running low on time, and this is a really good question. So we are, Seattle Public Schools is in a remote learning setting, and we are, special education students are also under the, we have IDA requirements to support students with the free and appropriate education. And we're in that balance between making sure that we're supporting students as they're making progress, to make progress on their IEP goals, and maintain the health and safety protocols. And that's that, like, that's that, that's that balance and that tension that we're working within. So we want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to support students remotely, and then we are looking to move into that in-person space and follow all the health and safety guidelines to move them into that school building. So we're in that process. It's beginning to happen right now. And I'm certain we will have, we will be moving forward with in-person services per individual IEP team's decisions.
Currently, we are not doing any in-person at this, like this right now. They're not helping.
We do have some in-person services happening right now. We have some evaluations happening, and we have some other students receiving services.
Right, thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. I hate to rush through that, but thank you so much for the presentation and the great questions. And we will, we know that this is just an overview, and we're going to keep going and working together to figure out how to make sure families have all the information. So thank you, everybody. I will pass it now to Director Hampson.
Yes, thank you, Director Rankin. The next topic is family engagement. We will begin with a staff presentation from Chief of Equity Partnerships and Engagement, Dr. Keisha Scarlett, Director of Stakeholder Engagement, Kirk Mead, and Family Partnerships Manager, Anita Koyor-Mwamba. We will then have a chance for directors' questions and comments before we move into a panel discussion with invited community and labor partners. I will now hand it over to Dr. Scarlett to begin the presentation.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We're really delighted to have this opportunity to be able to share. So just before I hand it over to our team, to Kirk Mead and to Anita Koyor-Mwamba, I just want to give a little bit of policy context for this, that we have a number of policy drivers for family engagement in our district, encompassed in Policy 0030 under the Tenet Partnerships, encompassed in 4110 in our family and community advisory and oversight committees, which are drivers for diverse representation of family and community voice. Policy 4129, which we'll dig into a little bit, and also Policy 4130. And then also, when you think about the Seattle Excellence Strategic Plan as policy, and even our foundational beliefs, these are all policy drivers for family engagement. So I'd like to introduce Kirk Mead, who will follow up and move forward with this part here. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited to be here and speak with you. I would be remiss if I didn't sort of dive in and first make some acknowledgements here. One, acknowledging that we're doing all of this work on unceded Indigenous territories. That's a critical component of how we frame all the work that we do. Balancing sovereignty and civil rights is a massive part of the discourse. We need to engage and evolve as we grow as a district, and I want to also introduce that language into our conversation today. I'd also like to offer some acknowledgement to our parents who have done an exceptional job under absolutely impo- under absolutely impossible circumstances. I don't know if it's possible to overstate how challenging I know it's been. I'm a father of a nine-year-old who was a special education student, a child on, on the spectrum. I can tell you that I appreciate, understand, and uh definitely can viscerally uh feel the frustrations and the aggravations of our parents as they sit there trying to do their work and support children as well, and I just want to offer acknowledgement because you've done an exceptional job under impossible uh circumstances. So thank you for your energy, for your time, for your sacrifice. I also want to thank our educators who are parents and do both. They juggle all of those things and those priorities. For those educators that don't have parents, or who don't have children, and who also have children, they have juggled an enormous amount of load, and it has been difficult, it has been adverse, uh, and they've, they've been pressed in ways they weren't prepared to be pressed for, in ways that they didn't feel fully supported in, and I want to offer that, look, we see you, we hear you, uh, we're working through these challenges, so I want you to, to, to at least hold fast to the knowledge that there are people in this, in this district, uh, tops to bottom, who are here to support, here to work alongside you in collaboration and partnership. Um, I'd also like to thank my team, Anita Koyor Muamba, uh, Sosa Salali, as well as Tracy Barnett, our former practicum student, and uh last uh, but not least, our two uh, uh, our two uh new employees, Nichelle Page, and of course, uh, Karama Blackhorn. And uh, I think it's really critical that we talk about and acknowledge our family engagement team on, on a regular basis, Anita Koyor Muamba, who leads this team in an exceptional way. I want to dive also into our policy component here uh as we move through this. This is what informs so much of the work that we do. We've had partners meetings uh i- in the last few days with uh Seattle Council PTSA. We sat alongside in partnership with our, our fantastic folk over in the Special Ed Department across multiple focus groups. We have sat in listening sessions uh with our East African communities and with our Latinx communities. We've talked and engaged and acknowledged a lot of our communities uh throughout our, our uh family engagement work, and this policy is what has undergirded all that, Policy 4129. And it dives into really about the two-way communication, meaningful communication, as it were, between parents uh and schools and personnel, and this outreach to diverse families. And I want to offer too, that as we talk about families, we use all of these euphemistic terms, family-based educational justice, underserved, under-resourced. And what's really important to understand is, the way that we get better at serving families is finding ways that the communities identify and describe their lived experiences, and then speak that way about our communities and with our communities. Use the language of community to describe community, take the lead from community in terms of how we shape and design and co-conspire to better support our families and our communities. The guiding policy, again, just another place to reiterate, there was 4129 SP, and there's 4129, and really talking about the, what's conducive to meaningful engagement for our families. So one of the things I, I have to acknowledge as well is, we have a history of sort of going out to community, engaging our families, uh, asking them to share with us their trauma and their trials and tribulations, and then not coming back in an effective way, at an appropriate cadence with the sufficient information and a thorough sort of knowledge of what it is that they've asked and their concerns. We ask questions that sometimes might uh evoke trauma, and we don't in fact have the right sort of disposition of the partnerships in place to address the trauma that has been surfaced just through the inquiry around how we might better serve students. So I want to offer that we are in a process of getting better. Stakeholder work, EPE work, and ultimately, family engagement work is really about that process of becoming better. Um, the guiding question here, especially in this moment, the strategic planning moment, is uh where we, where we're setting, again, that euphemism of families for educational justice, but really Black and Brown families, Indigenous families, undocumented, uh refugee families, et cetera. All those people, all those individuals roll up in that. What we're leading here though, is with African-American boys and the experience of their families in our district. So powerful focus and emphasis here, it should inform all of our conversations in the district, and that's part of what EPE does, it's part of what stakeholder engagement does, and ultimately, what family engagement does. Here are some of our core beliefs here, the essential core beliefs about, all parents have dreams for their families and want the, uh, for their children, and want the best for them. All parents have the capacity to support their children's learning. Parents in schools, staff members are equal partners in this work. Uh, the responsibility for building partnerships between school and home, primarily with school staff, and we'll talk a little bit about what our partnerships and our capacities look like. Well, I, I want to also maybe surface a, a point that's really important to understand. Often people come and they talk with us about uh family engagement, what it means, and who's responsible, and what's, what's happening, and, and ultimately, how do we drive accountability? And I think an important thing to know is, that while it's natural to look to family engagement in terms of answering those questions, and we offer deep partnership around, in, in consultative, coaching, collaborative, and capacity-building um uh roles, it's also important to understand that while we have that accountability component of it, the, the, the real sort of meat and potatoes of that work, the, where it happens is in the divisions. Divisions who hold the work plans, who think about how they articulate family engagement priorities through their specific uh set of strategies and tactics, where family engagement has so much to say about it in terms of how we support that work. It's our divisions that articulate the clear plan that's on the ground, that is experienced by our families, our students, and our educators, and I'll offer this too, that it's really critical to remember that just because we conspire inside of an institution doesn't mean the lived experiences of our students shift as a, as a, as a function of that conspiracy. So thinking through, again, I may talk really full-throatedly about this work, but if the lived experiences of our students and our families and our communities does not shift, we have not succeeded in the things that we've designed to do. What does family engagement do? Offering again here, that we research, we develop, and disseminate all of our best practices, our frameworks and our theories. We're the holder of the information, we're the partners and thought leaders around this work, and we offer consultation and coaching, and you see where we're, we're working across, at least right now, over fifteen schools, um, five central office departments to, to support their work directly. We're partnering with SHA, partnering with schools to develop the CSIP uh goals. Again, an area that was elevated through direct uh influence of, of family engagement work. Uh, I'd also offer that we are offering tiered support across thirteen liaison schools, those priority, thirteen, thirteen liaisons across thirteen priority schools. Offering here that, uh, with our priority schools, those are our schools, for those of you who don't know, the highest concentration of African-American boys. Again, reiterating that it is critical we remain focused and keep our eyes on the prize around how we support our African-American boys and their lived experience in education as well. The APTT program, again, another program run really, really effectively, piloted South Shore, um, but also the Rising Star and Thorgood, led by uh Anita Koyor Muamba as well. And then what we've done so far, and apologies for pressing through this, I know we're short on time, I want to make certain I get enough time for questions here. Uh, so you'll see some of the data points around what has happened, offering too, that this is within the nineteen, within the two thousand nineteen, uh twenty twenty school year, and of course, in the midst of that twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, that pandemic hit that slowed down a little bit of our processes and, and sort of sent us to the four corners to support other critical initiatives of standing-up supports for our families and our educators. But here's where we left off for that year, and there's a lot of encouraging uh direction and, and growth that happened there, and thinking about moving forward, what it means to build on this work, to scale this work, and grow this work. We operate from at least four uh components here uh in terms of how we frame our work. Capabilities, uh, it being one of them, confidence being the other, uh, connection and cognition. These are core components of how we support schools, right? Um, the ways in which schools see themselves, and the ways which we see them. Um, I will skip back to that slide, I accidentally advanced it. Our capabilities, building skills, knowledge, tools, and resources. Confidence, building self-efficacy. And again, this is really, uh, uh, there's a programmatic component here that didn't make its way to the slide, but our Family Connector University, and Asosa, who has done an exceptional job in terms of building that out, and as we scale that work in building, in getting, uh, onboarding a Family Connector University uh lead, and those thirteen liaisons that actually will be working in our schools, um, building efficacy to support our families as they get into the, into the educational system. You know, a, a great win and a fantastic story is Anita Koyor Muamba, who came from our communities, who came through our schools, and ended up being an incredible asset and resource for our work here in family engagement. Um, connection, and also cognition, of course, shifting mindsets and beliefs, and thinking about how our educators see our families and vice versa. Some of our tools and frameworks, theories of action and change, some of the components you'll see here are really, really important. Uh, to the bottom here, the dual capacity-building framework is one of the most critical components that we use to move and shift uh educators and administrators, school leaders, thoughts, hearts, and minds around this work, and they've onboarded in really meaningful ways. Uh, we've seen that through our survey work and through engagement work with our school educators and leaders. Our primary educate, engagement initiatives, I'm, again, gonna run through this here as well. Um, academic parent teacher teams, again, Anita Koyor Muamba, our manager, has done a really fantastic job in leading that, in shaping that, in building that. Uh, and then of course, um, you see another component of this, uh, the hourly opportunity, so around third grade literacy and supporting that as well. Uh, and it's assigned across our thirteen priority schools, so again, elevating a strategic uh initiative around literacy, and then prioritizing the schools with the highest concentration of African-American boys in it. And then of course, having a central office uh-based coordinator uh to be hired to support all of our liaisons, and I mentioned that before as well. Um, moving on to the next one, Family Connectors University, North Seattle Community College Partnership, and led again by uh Asosa Salali. A fantastic partnership, again, shaping how our parents are able to engage, increasing their competency, their capacity around supporting uh the work of family engagement at schools on the ground. Uh, you'll see there, the KPI, three hundred parents trained. We do have a fall session coming up here in October, right around the corner. And last but not least, and I, I think I might have skipped uh Mohammed when I did the initial interview, uh introductions of our team, Mohammed Roble, who has been an exceptional bit of uh resource and asset for our, for our team as well, doing immigrant refugee Somali language supports, and also supporting enrollment in special education. And I don't want to, I don't want to uh under, overstate, or understate rather, the importance of language justice in this conversation. We hear often in our focus groups and from our families, um, the ELL support is a critical component of that. I know in, in family engagement, we, we partner with a lot of our departments to really think about that, um, and, and really work to be better at supporting families. Even as we're doing focus groups, the ways in which we shape and design and, and, and format focus groups as it relates to language justice and language access are really, really critical. So practicing through our outreach, how we need to shape and support our families in the classroom and in the community as well, uh, also really important. So what's next here, and I'm, I'm gonna offer that, I think, uh, Dr. Scarlett's gonna jump back in here, and I do have Anita on the call as well. Uh, what's next here for us uh and around the work that we do in family engagement? Performance management support, and I know Dr. Scarlett can talk a little bit about that, and I'll just run through these real quick, and then we can back, back into this. Family Engagement Advisory Group, our CSIP Tier One Three-Year Family Engagement Plan, Support for Family Engagement Goals Within Divisional Work Plans, of course, investing and increasing the school-based resources here, communication outreach support, and I've talked a lot about that on this, on this uh presentation uh around uh focus groups and how we're supporting other divisions in their work, uh, family engagement as well. Again, those divisions holding the meat of that work, being deeply accountable and ideally responsive uh to the needs uh of our families and our communities, or as, as they shape their work plans going into the next uh academic year. Uh, again, thank you so much for your indulgence and uh for understanding how quickly I went through that. Hoping to have plenty of time here to, to engage. I know Dr. Scarlett has something to say about our, our next steps as well, and of course, uh Anita Koyor Muamba is here to answer questions around family engagement too. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much, Kirk. I appreciate how, um, just the level of urgency at which you went through in prioritizing questions um for our board and community questions that they are holding for us. So just um for the point of speaking about performance management for school leaders, I just want to highlight um two things, that um, the Association of Washington School Principals has a new leadership framework, it's the three-point O that was revised for the twenty twenty-one school year. And criteria seven, um, criterion rather, seven, engaging families and communities, I think is um an area um that is um particularly significant um in this body of work, and represents opportunities for us to work more closely with um our Chief Jessie and our, um, from Continuous Improvement and um Chief of Schools, um, in order to really think about um what are the ways that we can really align equity, racial literacy, and evidence of impact um within stakeholder engagement, and really drive um outcomes as far as um with our school leaders. And just to highlight back to when um Kirk spoke about those four um different um core beliefs, um, the, that final belief about the responsibility of cultivating and sustaining partnerships rests primarily with school staff, um, especially school leaders, um, is the connection um into that one. And then lastly, I'll talk about, um, just share that um at the level of school or educators, um, thinking about also criterion seven, that's in our um T-PET framework, um, communicating and collaborating with parents and school community, and we've been doing work in partnership with um human resources through the foundational beliefs and foundational coursework um in order to really drive what it looks like um to have these um attributes displayed at a proficient and distinguished level um in those performance management. So that continues to be work that we're doing.
Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, was that the, there says there's one more slide, I didn't know if there was another slide left.
Yeah.
One more slide, that's the end of the, that's the end of the deck.
Yeah, that was, yeah, but if you could move back to that last slide, I just, one more um point about that. I just wanted to invite um Chief Jessie, um, just to speak a bit about, um, for a moment about the CSIP um Tier One. There, we worked really closely with the um, with, across, um, cross-division effort um in the school improvement, um, plan improvements. Um, and there are some new requirements that are Tier One across all schools. So Chief Jessie, would you mind just sharing a little bit about that?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Chief Scarlett. Yeah, so this, uh, that was a collaborative effort uh between our teams, um, really around how to have family engagement explicitly called out, elevated, if you allow me, um, in the CSIP, uh, as we reconstructed uh the CSIP process over the last couple of years, and part of the work session that we had presented to you in the spring, um, really it was around our offer to say, hey, if this is in the strategic plan and we're building authentic uh engagement opportunities, we need to have explicitly called out what are schools doing, as opposed to kind of like sliding it underneath other goals or other work, this is really a, a elevated piece. Um, Kirk spoke really well to that, um, as uh, as part of where we're saying, hey, you know what, that's not something where we're gonna try to do something, everything in central office, but it's actually the power comes when we are enabling our staff to take the steps to intentionally practice cul- cul- um, cul- uh, sorry, cultivating connections with our families, uh, listening, learning, co-developing. And so uh, we know that too often, it's just a transactional relationship, we're really turning and focusing on trusting and partnership. Um, and so this year, as we started off, that was again, some of the readiness uh in wellness, family connection, and then building in, again, that family connection within our, our daily work as educators, so that we can partner truly with our families. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to you all. Um, we uh, the, are gonna go to uh our next presenter, um, and then we're gonna take questions for everyone at the end. Um, so we're gonna try really hard to stand, thank you so much, I know that was a lot to get through, and I know you worked really hard to get through it, so I really appreciate that. Um, and there's, there's a lot there, and I did see all that CSIP information. If Tina, you could pull up, um, Carlina, are you with us?
I am, I'm here.
Oh, great, okay, and so Tina, I know you have um Carlina Banks-Brown from CCR and the Roadmap Project. There we go, and I will let you take it away.
Perfect, I just want to make sure for rules of engagement, am I just saying next slide? And it's gonna, somebody's gonna click it for me?
Yeah, that works perfectly, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Um, so thank you, everybody, for having me here, my understanding charges, I'm gonna give you a little bit of a history of the regional work that CCR, um, the Roadmap Project has been embarking on in family engagement, and just want to state that Seattle Public Schools has been a very deep partner in this work, has um participated in all aspects of it. And so I'm just gonna try to give you a really, and I know I only have like ten minutes, and I have this slide, um, deck has a lot more information than I'm gonna share with you today. So, and then at the end of it, also has my contact information, if anyone has any questions. Um, as you all know, previously, I love talking about family engagement, it's, it gives me much joy um to be here with you, um, to talk about this today. So, next slide. If we, um, little bit about the Roadmap Project, we are a collective impact initiative, um, cradle to college, we are South King County, so Seattle High Line, Auburn Renton, Kent, Federal Way, and Taquilla are the districts that we um engage with, and My Lanes are family and community engagement. Um, we have a vision statement that every child will thrive, next slide please, that every child will thrive within our, um, in our region, and that um we are hyper-focused on children of color and uh low-income families. Next slide. We have a value statement, and you also see that there is about seven to eight value um uh words that we use in all of the work that we use, we try to center all this. And I want to also state, these are slides that we have been using. We just went through a transformation of a new leadership under Bernadette Miracle. So we had a white leader under Mary Jean Ryan, who's our founding leader, and so a lot of this work done, that these things, like these value statements and things like that, we're actually using words like, starting with race and centering community, um, where before we were using terms like equity and inclusion. So our statements are a little bit um stronger now with our leadership. Um, we have a twenty twenty, next slide, we have a twenty twenty goal, which um is stated from our previous work that we did in twenty, two thousand and ten, when we were initially, an initial at a baby organization. We also have a twenty thirty goal, which is the goal that we hyper-focus on now, which is um closing the opportunity gap for kids of color. Um, and that is by stating seventy percent of all children will be on track to receive their credentials by the time they graduate. Next slide. We have over a hundred thousand children that we service in our region. Next slide, um, in that In that space is that 71% of our students are students of color. And 19% of our children, of our teachers are teachers of color. And this is why family engagement, this slide right here, I left in my presentation to say this is why we, we anchor family engagement as one of our strongest strategies within CCR and the Roadmap Project. Next slide. Our family engagement work has been 10 years in the making. Next slide, please. And this roadmap visual that you have here is just to tell you that we're starting from 2010 to 2020. We have been using family engagement as one of our strategies. I started with the organization in 2012, but I was a family community leader who was actually part of the initial work in the parent focus group space. So I've been involved with CCR, the Roadmap Project, from the inception on family engagement work. Next slide. If you see, I took that roadmap and broke into three parts. Slide, previous slide, please. The very first slide are the very first round from 2010 to 2013. It was really about us learning. It was our landscape analysis work. We did a focus groups on, on three different areas, which was city level or local level, state level, and then national level. So we have a document that was written for us on that landscape analysis of what family engagement strategies was happening within our region and in our area and then our nation. We also did a, a project with Dr. Annie Shamara and Dr. Jill Lott to create family engagement indicators that we were going to use to measure family engagement. All of this led to a very large, very successful parent forum, which had over 800 parents participating with students at Foster High School in Tukwila. Seattle was one of the, was one of a major recruiters and outreach mechanisms to get parents to participate as well as providing us resources and supports for those, for that time. We had over 30 languages spoken at that parent forum, so it was very powerful. But what was really from that parent forum, it was a huge lift for our small organization at that time. And so in our review of it, into the next phase of our work, we actually began to acknowledge that we're not going to be able to carry that forth. And then Harvard came. Dr. Karen Mapp created a Family Engagement Institute that was created in Har- at Harvard University. And next slide. And so our next round of family engagement learning was all about capacity building from the district or school building level. This is where the dual capacity framework was introduced. And we began to double down on the family engagement, on this dual capacity framework to inform our work. So in 2014, we took a cohort of folks to Harvard. I think it was about 40 some, 40 people strong from our region. And I think Seattle Public Schools at that time had about five to eight people in our cohort. And then there was actually an additional group that we met there of principals who were participating at the institute. So we actually be able to have a really good showing from the Pacific Northwest, Washington area, at the first inaugural Family Engagement Institute, which is deep dive learning from researchers and people like Dr. Karen Mapp. We then took a second group to Harvard in 2015, and we had over 60-plus folks going to Harvard. And our learning there was that Harvard's expensive. We could not continue to carry that to continue to build the choir. So this, this frame or this time right now is we're building a choir. And so it was decided at that point in our next steps of planning, which we spent in 2015, was we would create our own local Family Engagement Institute. Almost a mock-up of what was happening in Harvard. So somewhere where we're learning about our local access and assets and experts here, as well as bringing national experts to the region. And at that institute, we had over 200-plus people to attend in that institute. And from that learning, what we learned very quickly was that there was an opportunity to do capacity building with district leaders in support to have a way to support school buildings. So most districts at that time had family engagement, district, what we call district leaders. They all had different titles at that time, directors, managers, coordinators, and we were convening that group. Next slide. So from 2016, we went into now building the capacity of our adopting the family, family engagement dual capacity framework from Dr. Karen Mapp. This visual is the current engagement. So I left you the link there, but one of the things that we doubled down on is the process conditions that we're needing to support district leaders and parents to be able to have partnership within to support for student outcomes. And we began to double down on creating ways for district leaders to learn about process conditions and how to take their expertise from a district office and support school building leadership. What we also learned was that district leaders had a hard time building relationships because their access to principals was, was almost not there. So they were more about systems and systems approach within districts, but not necessarily holding the reins of family engagement supports to build partnership between teachers and students or building leadership and parents. So this was, this was, we spent about 18 months in that learning with our national leader, Michelle Brooks, from Institute for Educational Leadership. Next slide. And from there, in our dual capacity framework, we began to acknowledge that all of our work has to have what we call the four Cs. Is that we were needing to make sure that all of our work, anything that you do, whether it's the CSIPS or your parenting plans or your work plans, have to have the four, four Cs, which are the capabilities, the connections, the cognition, and the confidence. And so we began to create spaces where the district leaders were learning ways to bring those, bring those four Cs into their work and then be able to articulate that work to, to people like yourself, school board members, district leaders, families, communities, principals, and things like that. So, and as you can see from the Seattle Public Schools presentation, from their early presentation from Kirk, we were very aligned in all of the work that we've been doing. Next slide. Sorry, next slide, please. In this space, in the building capacity and district leadership, next slide. Sorry, I had this flag and have control. Is that all the, I want to talk about the accomplishments from the district leaders' work of them doing, doing in this original. Is that seven districts committed to participating in professional learning community? So all seven districts were exposed to this learning. We had 18 months with national leader coming out every month and participating in a family engagement assessment. And from those assessments, work plans were created in six of the seven districts. We also had some now, some technical assistance support in actually building products when it came to training and charters and professional development where we're supporting principal leadership. And that's where the next two family engagement institutes started. It was always about supporting district leaders to get to school building-based leadership to support their learning. So they created a climate survey recommendation that was sent to all districts. I talked about designing the two successful family engagement institutes, supported 21 family engagement action plans that were created by school building teams. And then implemented a pilot right now, which was talked about in Kirk's presentation, which was Academic Parent Teacher Team, which Seattle and High Line are our pilot districts to learn on how to implement a best practice and making sure that we understand the ingredients that are needed to implement those best practices and following up on continuous improvement science and implementation science through that. All of this work has been evaluated. We have a GATES evaluation that was done by some funding, and then we also have our own personal evaluations by Ed Northwest. So we've been evaluated from the get-go to show all of our outcomes and our indicators were being met during this time. So if anyone's interested in that work or needs some sleep material to help you sleep at night, let me know.
Next slide.
One of the things that we want to make sure that we mention is that in our capacity building framework right now is that we're double-downing on using family engagement as not only the districts or the school-based leadership, but then also in our parent leadership. And so we are with the help of the district leaders, which currently Kirk and Anita sit on, is we have created a process to build parent leadership simultaneously as this is going. And so this is an area where CCR is using the Roadmap Project region and supporting parent leadership in that space. Next slide. So one of the things that happened in that is that there was a design for ours, a reflection on what is needed for parent relationship or parent leadership. We attend, we attained some funding to support that. We created a proposal and we awarded a contract to Community Cafe Collaborative. This was taking parents through so they can create, they themselves would create a parent leadership. Sorry, my dog just hurts one at the door. Next slide.
And Carlina, if you can start to wrap it up so we can get to our other speakers, thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. So parent leadership, we have a parent leadership team simultaneously as we have the parent leadership collabor- or learning space. And so this is where we are practicing our dual capacity framework, as we are asking districts to practice their dual capacity framework on supporting both sides of the dual capacity. So as I said, for this slide deck is going to have a lot more information than I can go through with you guys. So the last slide has my contact information. I can actually wrap it up here because it's going to go further. There you go.
Great, thank you so much, Carlina, that's so much important information. And now we're going to go to Manuela Sly from Seattle Council.
Hello, thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Manuela Sly, I'm president of Seattle Council PTSA. Our council is committed to advocating for every single student in Seattle Public Schools. I want to tell you that when COVID-19 hit, our council came together quickly to support SPS in connecting families to resources, information, food, and later, technology. We connected thousands of people via email, surveys, phone calls, Zoom meetings, and hosted forums for community to meet with Superintendent Juno, with all seven members of the school board, with officials from public health, and with SEA leadership. Many of these meetings have been intentionally centered on families of color or families with language barriers. We want to recognize and understand that family engagement is very important to all communities. But to these communities that are underserved is absolutely vital, and we're committed to that work. This work that we do is robust, fast, and effective because it is based on trust. Family teachers, principals, family support workers, everyone that have an influence and a decision on the future of these students trust our advocacy and commitment to family engagement. But having a strong partnership with those making decisions for our students has been paramount to our work. I will now let UT Hawkins from SEA to share what families and educators have been working together in this partnership.
Hi, thank you for having me. Across our school communities, our SEA membership has really taken this moment to recognize the interdependency that we have as a school community with, with our families. As educators, we're not only part of, but also in service to the community. And so to rise in this moment, we must be rooted in our connections and coalition building. And what has been a true partnership between our students, families, and our educators, our principals, downtown administrators, PTSA, and other community-based organizations is that we all have this need to reimagine and reconstruct education in this moment. Jennifer Mader and myself have come into this leadership with a real understanding about our responsibility to do the work of humanizing this experience of COVID and looking across our school communities to fit in endless empathy in this moment. And now more than ever, our school system must come together around family engagement. At SEA, we have been collaborating with the SC, PTSA, and other community organizations, as well as our principals, to have an open and honest dialogue about how we can support the community interest. We did some incredible work this summer, creating that trusted space of really being able to listen, but then move forward with what was heard from our families, what was understood by our educators, to move that information forward into our dialogues around this MOU that we were able to bargain. To really be able to hold the district and ourselves accountable. So I'm hoping that the difference in our school year and in our communicate, is going to be the level of communication, the honesty, and the value we find in each other. The priority must be centered on working collectively and seeing each other as valuable to one another. Building out the quality of our schooling is heavily dependent on our family engagement relationships. So in order to survive this and not degrade the integrity of our school system any further, we have to hear the community's call to reimagine our education collectively and stand together. And pass it on to Marquita and Sabrina.
Marquita, Sabrina, I think, if one of you is talking, we cannot hear you. Hello? Maybe whichever one of you is available, start. Can anyone, can you tell if they're on for me, Ellie?
They are, Director Hanson.
If you're trying to speak by phone, you may need to press star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hello.
Sabrina, go ahead.
Hi.
Yes.
Hello?
We can hear you, Sabrina.
Thank you, I am so sorry about the connection. I just really want to express my excitement for our partnership with SEA. PTA stands for Parent Teacher Student Association. And the key component for the work that we have to do is to build the capacity of our educators and the capacity of our families. Right now, half of the Seattle Public Schools' human family is missing from our table. And this work will allow us to come together to make sure teachers have the capacity and our PTA leaders have the capacity, doing the anti-racist work, doing the equity work, to make sure that we reach every child. That is the DNA of PTA. And so it is really important for us to put families together with educators to make sure we do the important work that our organization was founded on as we celebrate 50 years of partnership with the National Council of Colored Parents and Teachers. And I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Marquita.
Well, thank you very much. Very much appreciate the opportunity to be here. So Marquita, I'm sure at what point we did introduction, but my current role is the Seattle Education Association Center for Racial Equity. It's kind of like a department of SEA. Very specifically, we focus on supporting our, our move towards racial equity in the roles that educators have in our, in our district. So one of the things I wanted to briefly talk about is just the ways that we are connecting with families and how we're valuing that as really the next kind of move, right? So obviously, we've always been supportive of our connections in the community and our connections with community organizations, obviously PTSA. But now more than ever, it's even more important because of that distance that we have with our youth and our, and our students. And so some of the things that we've been talking about is, I'm looking at my notes when I go over to the side, is, is how we can make sure that family voices are really leading what we're doing in our remote, remote learning. How do we make sure that we not just hear the family voices, but like whatever their networks are, right? So we know that people are relying on a lot of their community networks, their partnerships. But the question is, do we know about those things as well? Do we know that they're doing that and how do we connect? One of the, some of the bigger issues that has been coming up is that families are One of the, some of the bigger issues that has been coming up is that families are feeling their students being disconnected socially. So, there's some challenges sometimes about how to make sure that kids actually have that social connection with their peers. Right now, kind of the only way that happens is like Zoom, I mean, sorry, is chat. And we know that Teams chat and that particular product doesn't really work well for that. And so, there's some issues like that. And of course, there's questions about content, about ethnic studies, about how families feel like they're represented and seen in the classroom. I don't, to the best of my limited knowledge, I don't think we have yet an issue that we've seen nationally where students are having things that happen in their background, in their camera, whatever, and then their family, or and then the educator responds in appropriately. I've heard stories about that. I don't think we've had that in Seattle yet, but that's still a big question because basically, we're being invited into families' homes, right? We're being invited into their living spaces. And I think some of the questions that I've heard from families at this point is that there isn't a clear understanding of what they have control over, of what they can self-advocate about when it comes to what educators are engaging in family homes. So, that's just a few of the things that I am engaged with in conversation in the community and supporting educators in doing this work. But I look forward to any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Marquita. And thank you to all the panelists and staff. We'll go to questions. I know we're kind of rushing through, and I apologize for that. It's really fantastic to have such a full spectrum of what we're talking about with respect to family engagement. And so, I'm going to go ahead and start with Director DeWolff.
Yes, thank you. I only have one question, but also just want to share my gratitude. This is always the highlight of our work session. So, thank you for organizing this panel, and thank you to the panelists for being here. I know I'm very inspired by your partnership and collaboration and solidarity, so thank you for that. The one question I have is particularly for our families, so for our Seattle Council PTSA representatives, how can the district practice showing families respect? What would that look like if the district respected families? What are things we can do?
Director DeWolff, this is Manuela Sly, Seattle Council PTSA president. I don't think we have enough time in this call to go through all the things that you could do, but number one, I think it's important that families know that we're all on the same page and that the families are listened to. We have a lot of families that are still not able to connect to remote learning, but then we're told that mostly everyone. So, we really need to define what mostly is and what those that are missing are as important as anybody else. So, I, again, there's a lot of things that we could talk about, but most importantly is to be able to really recognize our blind spots and work on those instead of thinking or portraying that everything is okay and that everything is covered because it's not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, Director Hershey?
Hey, this is Director Hershey. Can y'all hear me well?
No, Director Harris?
Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know my alphabetical order.
Actually, actually, could I go ahead and go before you, Director Harris? Because I need to get to meeting with the parent.
Thank you, Director Harris.
I only have one major question. I only have one major question. My big question is, given that there are so many blind spots in our system, what I would really like to know is what still needs to change at the system level to enable our district to do this work effectively, right? Because, you know, I have a clear understanding of what the dual capacity framework is, but I'm not sure that all of our families in our system do, right? So, what I'm really trying to know is where, and this can be answered by staff, and I would also be interested in hearing the answer from some of our speakers today, but where are some of those biggest identified blind spots that we need to fix in terms of potentially policy, procedure, this, that, and the other, in order to get to a better place than where we are right now? So, if we could get some help identifying those from the board's perspective, that'd be really helpful.
Great question, Bren.
Do you want to answer to that, Director Hershey?
Yes, please. And again, this could be from staff, this could be from our speakers.
I just want to briefly. Go ahead, Carlina.
I'm just going to say quickly, I was going to say that I believe one of the things that needs to happen is that Seattle Public Schools needs to identify that the resources are needed, that you cannot have a very small staff to be able to hold a large school district to support family engagement. The dual capacity framework was created because it's identifying that district, family or district and building staff has, also have to learn some capacity to be able to be in partnership with parents. And parents also have to learn some capacity and be in partnership with their teachers and their district leaders or their principals. Henceforth, why we have family engagement 101s or parent leadership 101s or family connectors or you name them, they're out there. But there's also a side of it, but you cannot do it with such a small staff. You have to be able to have the support because it's a day, it's a long game. It's not a short game. This is a long game, and that means sustainability, that means opportunity, and that means you have to be able to have a systemic approach to it. That's my two cents.
And if I can just add in, I don't think Seattle Public Schools and Seattle Council PTAs' family engagement strategy has ever been aligned. We have never utilized the 80 buildings that we're in and a strategic aligned partnership using the dual capacity framework and all of the family engagement best practices despite a lot of talk and a lot of meetings. We haven't aligned. So, that's one area right now. Seattle Council PTSA presidents and vice presidents are meeting monthly right now to make sure we do the work. Their last assignment was looking at the C-SIPS for their building, and I think it's very critical because we can't wait to build the capacity of the new family engagement, stakeholder engagement staff because our families can't wait. And so, we have to be strategic. We have to bring SEA in. We have to bring in community partners, but this is all hands on deck, and this is about coalitioning building, and this is about building a safety net so that no one falls through. And when we find out somebody's not in the net, we go out and we find them. And that's what this work is right about. We can build the charts, we can build the strategy, but right now, this is life and death for our families, and we need to build the work.
So, I've got Marquita, UT, and Kirk. I'll have their hands up. I'll start with Marquita and then go to Kirk and then UT if you feel like it hasn't been covered.
Thank you very much. Very specifically, when we're asking what can we do to respond to families is we need to prioritize our families of color. We've done kind of some loose focuses around, I don't know, like little focus groups or things like that, but we really haven't prioritized our families of color. And I think one specific thing we could do is figure out what their questions are and make sure that we're responding directly to those questions. I think there's a lot of times that we assume what the parents are interested in, assume what families are trying to answer, and then give those answers, but it doesn't really meet their needs. I do believe that right now, the people in our district who are focused on supporting families are really actually disconnected from families. So, I want to promote the staff and the departments that are most connected and closest to our families to really do this work rather than some of the other positions that are assuming that role but are actually not very connected to our families. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kirk.
Hold on, I think I was next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Shonda. And Kirk, I will be brief, I promise. I just want to affirm what Carolina and Sabrina have said. I appreciate Marquita bringing the focus to families of color because what I said earlier, and I genuinely meant it, is like, how are we doing it differently? Because I think there is something to be said about ideally, what I would love to see, what I think educators, community, what this coalition building is, is the priority of this work and the investment in this work, leading our conversations to actions. They drive the conversation to actions, and it still feels secondary. And that can't be the case if this is the genuine work of re-centering towards family engagement that we want to do, and that's complicated. Takes the investment, the capacity, the system building to do that, but there's got to be, you have to start really honoring being able to speak openly about what we can and can't do and delivering on the things that we can do openly and honestly across. We cannot make any more promises of things that we cannot fulfill, but we have to work together to really decide how we can fulfill those with all of our assets together.
Thank you, UT. Go ahead, Kirk.
And I will also try and be as brief as possible. One, congratulations, UT, SEA incoming team as well, and the SEA Council PTSA met with that group leadership team that's coming in. Excited to continue to partner with them. So, thank you so much for y'all's service as well under the leadership of Director Sly. I want to also offer that, one, we do talk often about what family engagement as a department can do, and I want to make certain that we are very clear that family engagement is a relatively small department. I think everyone here already knows that, but the core of this, of the thrust of my statement is, is that much of the family engagement work is situated and embedded with other, within other divisions. So, we come in to support other divisions to deliver on family engagement. That is not to sidestep a question around accountability, but rather to talk about how we actually might scale this work moving forward and really have to think about if we're going to do something different than embedding that in the divisional work plans, we need to think very clearly, A, about what we intend to do, right? Who is going to be responsible for that? And what are the human and financial capital investments that the district will make in support of those objectives? Again, what we want to do, so are we moving meaningfully away from or towards the existing set and frameworks for family engagement? And then, who it is that's going to own that work moving forward or to shared accountability or responsibility? And ultimately, what are our investments from a resource and asset standpoint? So, thanks so much.
And I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and go, I know there's a couple other, Anita and Keisha have their hands up. I'm going to go to the next question, and then in response to that, if others want to illuminate in responding to that, then they can add on to that. So, let me go to Director Harris.
Thanks, everybody, for being here today. I am so impressed with the thoughtfulness and the deep dive and the hard, hard work that's being done. And I guess I would like to suggest a couple of things. I would like to see our staff post weekly in the Friday memo with at least a one pager of what we're doing with the work plan, what the goals are, what we're hoping to accomplish. I think a lot of, I think people are working really, really hard, but I don't think we know it. And I also don't think that we're leveraging the brilliant minds out there with SEA, SPTSA, Special Ed, PTSA, et cetera, and the title, the 13 schools. I implore you, I beg of you, that we do a much better job of communicating so that board members aren't taken by surprise and are kept fed and learned up. Engagement is extraordinarily close to my heart, and when we do not engage, then we have a vacuum, and it's filled with misimpressions, miscommunications, and then it's not about the children and our students, it's about adults. And I, we need desperately to figure out a better way of communication, and we need desperately, as your board of directors, all seven of us, to be kept apprised of the good work and about the challenges. Thank you.
Okay. And then, I think I saw Anita's hand go up first, so I don't think there was a question there, Director Harris, but if Anita wants to comment, maybe this would be a good time for that, and then I will move to Director Mack.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm glad we are all on here. Just to speak directly to my, to the body of work I'm charged with leading, I cannot reiterate enough how structurally it is not possible to attend to 55,000 students almost with three staff members. Secondly, we did a serious assessment when we had a landscape analysis done, and what emerged was we have to build the capacity of the district to support principals leading family engagement at their school sites because those families engage primarily with their teachers, and that's the primary unit of change. In order to do that, people need to be equipped with systems, with understanding what drives the work, and with knowing how to address that clearly because many families, they can come to us, but we can give them advice, and there are lots of calls that I do get of that nature. I think it's important that we are careful of the language we use and the expectations we hold. I think that transparency and stronger communication may be where the issue actually lies because a lot of work is happening, and how it finds the light of day matters. So, I want to let you know that my team works very, very hard, but if we assess where the money is, then if the money speaks to values, then I will leave that to the board to think about what that means with our current structure and staffing. And whether, if that's not adequate, then what should we do about that is the question I would pose. But in terms of the work being delivered, Carolina spoke to all the work that's happened regionally. What she did not speak to is how much Seattle has been able to get aligned with systems. And I know I don't have time, so I'll just end there, and I'm happy to respond to anything else that may be out there.
Thank you. Director Mack?
Yeah, I really appreciate all of the presentation and conversation, and in particular, the questions around what can we do better and the thought going into that, and especially because my question that kept popping into my head, I think Anita just kind of started going into a little bit, was that at the root of engagement is effective communication, and communication's not a one-way valve, and it can't be a one-way valve. It needs to be a conversation with our families. That engagement has to be that way. And so, I don't know that anyone can answer this question in two minutes or less, but the question that keeps coming to my mind is what structurally, from a systemic level, can we do to increase that two-way communication more effectively? And I heard that there's a lot of work going on supporting principals and teachers, and that that's part of what the work of the family engagement team is doing. And I'm wondering if making that more robust is something that would be really helpful.
Thank you, Director Mack. And because Dr. Scarlett had her hand up for, I don't know if you want to field that question or, and use that opportunity to speak further, Dr. Scarlett?
I'll let Anita respond to that question from Director Mack.
Thank you, Director Mack. Absolutely. Because just like Carolina said, in order for me to even get as skilled as I've become in this work, it is a process of being part of that community of district and regional leaders. Those investments were huge. I entered this as a parent who was passionate about my children doing this work. Sabrina Burr actually brought me in as a parent leader when my son was an infant. And so, I understand what it takes to try and surface a body of work that is generally not highly valued is important, but not as visibly valued. So, I think investments in building the capacity of the district so that school leaders, even when there's transition, have sustainable systems that they can enter into when they enter a school in a new capacity, making sure we have common language, a common understanding of what it is we measure when we're engaging families, to mitigate the distinction between title schools and non-title schools. There's certain things that adjust core principles and tenets that everybody should have and that every school leader should feel confident in working with and working through. And our role is to support that process. So, the work we're doing with our 13 priority schools right now will lead to that kind of general outcome to be able to assess where we're being successful. to be able to assess where we're being successful and where we're experiencing challenges. But with a staff of three, and Sabrina, I did see the issue around partnerships that you raised, and I fully agree. The issue is on this dual capacity building framework, we are getting the institution's capacity built. What does it look like when we partner with our community-based organizations and our families to then drive that body of work? And so the short answer, Director Mack, is that yes, we need to make greater investments in how we teach teachers and how we teach principals. And we need to have alignment and prioritization for those groups of people so that from the executive directors, the directors, it is something that everybody understands is for the good of our district. If we're going to transmit learning, family engagement is a critical element of that. And in order to do that, we have to be skilled in the task. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you so much, Anita. I'm gonna go now to Director Rankin for a question.
I don't really have a question. I just thank you so much, everybody, for being here. We have such a wealth of knowledge and expertise, and I wish we had, you know, three hours to talk all together. I guess I would, just as a comment, connected to what Anita was just speaking about, I think, you know, especially being remote, our goal really should be making sure that all of the good work that's happening centrally is reaching our buildings. And so I appreciate what you said, Anita, about, you know, our principals and our teachers. And how, you know, how do we, how do we make sure that we're not, as central leadership, you know, reexamining and readmiring a problem and, you know, putting all of our great brain power towards it. How do we make sure that we don't just get caught up in that and it doesn't actually reach our families? And so I just want to, I guess, second what Anita was just saying about, you know, when we talk about family engagement, what successful family engagement looks like, is that, is there, do we have an understanding across all buildings? Do, you know, principals as a whole have an understanding of what Seattle Public Schools defines as successful family engagement? So that we're all kind of moving in the same direction and prioritizing the same things? And I guess just making sure that people aren't left out, that it's all, you know, if family engagement is a priority, it's got to be, it's got to be a priority throughout. Because if there's a whole building that it's not for, then as far as that building is concerned, it's not a priority for Seattle Public Schools. So I guess, yeah, just the, when we talk about capacity building, expanding the work, what does, I think we should talk about what it looks like to be successful and how we show that so that together we can, you know, learn best practices from each other. And there's always going to be new families coming in, so it's always going to be continual. But yeah, I guess, especially in the remote situation, how do we know if it's really getting out to families is going to be the challenge?
Director Rivera Smith, why don't you go ahead and ask your question, then I'll let Dr. Scarlett weigh in?
Thank you. I know we're running way behind, so I'll be very brief. But I just want to say thank you to everybody who is here tonight to speak and share. And I feel we are so lucky to have all of you working so hard on such an important mission of engaging our families and building our school district that listens to them and listens to the needs and responds to the needs. And we have such a wealth of people here, all of us. And we are, I know we're strapped for cash, but we are certainly rich in passion and in people and in the desire, determination to see this through from our people who want to fight for our incarcerated students, our immigrant students, those seeking language justice, all students of color. Thank you for all the work you're doing. I don't have any questions, really. I wanted to hear from everybody here, and I thank you for everything you've shared.
Dr. Scarlett, and then I have another question, comment from Sabrina.
Yeah, I've really enjoyed and appreciated hearing our community partners. It's great to hear about the partnership between Seattle Council PTSA and SEA. Just to reiterate what Sabrina Burr had shared before about bringing teachers into PTSAs. As a building leader, there wasn't a whole lot of, when I was a former building leader, there wasn't a whole lot of teacher participation necessarily in the PTSA. So I'm glad that that partnership with SEA can help really bridge that. We have, you know, done work through our racial equity teams focused on family engagement for a number of years as we've had racial equity teams. But that just presents another opportunity. And then just to highlight and build upon what Marquita Prizing shared before about the disconnect between central office and families, that is absolutely correct. That there is a disconnect. We can never have enough capacity en masse to know what teachers and educators and school leaders get a chance to experience every single day. There will never be a way that Central Office Department will ever have a collective capacity of more than 5,000 school leaders, or excuse me, educators, and then, you know, 200 school leaders. You know, so that is an absolute truth. That's why we need to work in partnership together. That's why this isn't one part of that. And then lastly, to link what Kirk said about working through divisions, the example that we give about the 13 schools, that is work that is under Chief Debacker, being led in partnership with Executive Director Keshel Tonner. It is written, family engagement is written into their work plan, and then they use their resources in order to make a material stake in family engagement and to work with the family engagement team in order to build their capacity to be able to lift up something like, I'm using family, the family connectors, S-family liaisons. We have family connectors for a long time, but they've never been really activated in these type of ways. So this is innovative work, but it is in partnership with our department and our division and those cross divisions. So as we get smarter and more accountable about moving from sort of general engagement in our work plans to really thinking about what it means to have family engagement and then allocate our resources in that direction, that's when we'll really be able to see the shifts in the schools and the classrooms. And so our family engagement department, we have a multi-level capacity building plan from district vision and policy to academic strategy and implementation, the necessary structures and systems, to moving through support and supervision, classroom teachers, and then success in students. So a lot of times, we have miracles and no methods. We do have methods. But all of these things will require multi-level partnerships, internal and external partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. And then we're going to wrap up with Marquita, and I will adjourn after that. Go ahead, Sabrina.
Okay. Thank you so much. And I just want to remind everybody that the number one indicator of student success is family engagement. I don't know if you guys realize, education as we once knew it has changed. Many black families will never come back to your brick and mortar. Our children have found liberation in their learning. Don't feel like all of our children are deficit-based, because for some children like mine, we're doing better, they're doing better off. So this is the opportunity for us to really reimagine, to arm our teachers with the tools, but to let our children lead us, to let our children show us how they learn and be creative and innovative. There's no way, no reason why ethnic study is not experienced by everyone. There's no reason why we can't do what Auburn's doing and offering some evening programming for some students. We have to think out of the box. We have to be creative, but we have to look at partners. We have to be true about partnerships and what it's about. But we have to build a robust plan in this coalition. It can't be siloed. We have to build that braid that Seattle Council talked about with equity, anti-racism, and family-to-get engagement together in every area. If family engagement is everyone's responsibility, who's accountable for it? How are we measuring it? And how are we making sure that the experience that every family has is predictable, is respectable, and in reciprocity, where we're learning from families and teaching families? Because the truth is, we have just as much to learn from families as we do to teach. We have to think about family networks and not just the family. Because children are part of networks and communities, and we have to expand what family really looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Marquita?
Thank you very much. And I very much appreciate Sabrina's speaker. That's the next thing that I was going to speak to as well. Some of the things I want you to kind of remember is that now, I have heard from a lot of families who know what school looks like. There may have been concerns before about what their students were engaged in or what they were learning. But now they're literally in the classroom with their students, especially if they are learning from home. And if their kids are learning from home, then families are knowing what the content looks like. They know what the classroom looks like now. They know what engagement looks like now. They have opinions about it because they're actually getting to see it, right? And so we have a whole nother opportunity to engage families and what it means to reimagine what learning looks like. And not just reimagining what it means to be back in the schools. That's not even really what I'm talking about. It's more like, what does it mean for their children to engage in learning now, right? So one of the things I also want to recognize is that I have heard from, like, educators are working more than they ever. I mean, we already had educators working way beyond contracted hours to make sure that they meet our students' needs, right? Way more. I mean, I remember what it was like when I was teaching. But now, I have conversations at like 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night with educators who are just trying to figure out how best to deliver the content that they're trying, you know, in reaching students, right? We have educators who are saying, this is what we want to do, here's the information we want to provide, but we can't do it within our system right now. We're not getting the support we need, technical support we need, the ability to engage with families directly. Families are contacting them because they can't connect with our district, you know, with whatever the need is. There's a wide range of need that we have, but the parents are contacting the educators to figure out how to get that support. And then the educators are contacting us to say, us being SEA, to say, we don't know how to support. We don't know what that access point is. And so I, you know, bottom line is, when our families are saying, this is what we need, whatever their question is, it doesn't matter if we think we've answered it already. It's because we're not yet meeting that need. I know more recently that we've provided some information via communication, via email, on the website, whatever. At the end of the day, we have to check how we made the impact, right? So if our families are still asking for it, it means that somewhere along the lines, we're not impacting, we're not meeting their needs. So if our families are just asking questions, we need to figure out how to answer it. It doesn't matter if we've done it already. And so there's a lot of that, and it's coming through our educators. And so our educators are feeling really powerless to be able to meet the needs of our families. And the families are feeling sometimes powerless to get what they need as well. I think we just need to listen more. I think we need to win, at the end of the day, the need isn't met. When we're seeing that, we're seeing those questions, we're seeing those emails, there must be something that we're not yet doing. And it has to do more about the impact than what it is that we're attempting to do. We can't assess what we're doing just based on our process. We need to assess it based on whether or not our families, particularly of color, are feeling like their needs are being met. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I cannot tell you how much I appreciate all of you for hanging out. This is, had it been a two-hour meeting, we would have been right on time, so almost. And as there's no further business, I'm going to call this meeting adjourned and just again, say my thanks to all of you. Pinagiggy, stay happy and healthy and well. And this work is to be continued. Take care, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.